...by the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship in Salina, part of a religious organization working for freedom, reason, and tolerance.
For them.
We do.
Pardon me, gentlemen. We'll bring the Salina City Planning Commission meeting for October 16th to order. Our agenda items, the first item is the approval of the summary minutes from the October 2nd meeting. Are there comments or a motion to approve?
I'm over approving the minutes.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we'll move on to the public hearing items. Item number two, application CU 11-7 Avenue Tattoo requesting an amendment of the original conditional use permit. Staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back in 1997, this building at the corner of North Fifth and East Iron was purchased by Rabian Investments, which is Jim Raven Camp. The existing building is divided into seven tenant spaces, which over that time period have been leased to a variety of commercial uses. And back in October of 2011, almost exactly a year ago, you considered an application filed by the building owner, Jim Raven Camp, requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow his prospective tenants to establish and operate a body piercing studio in the C4 district. And the property that we were discussing at that particular time was the far west tenant space abutting the alley. And that tenant space was 14 feet wide and 50 feet deep. And in your action approving that, you had a list of conditions, some of which paralleled with state rules and regulations that already apply, but the first of which limited the hours to between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., limited the amount of front window area devoted to sunning, required that a solid partition or demising wall be erected between the waiting area and the body piercing area, and how art that was visible from the public sidewalk in public streets was displayed. And ended up with a total of 11 conditions, but the 10th of which was that no portion of the tattoo parlor or body piercing studio may expand beyond the subject tenant space without an amendment of the conditional use permit. Parallel with that, in September of 2011, you recommended approval and the city commission adopted a change which moved tattoo parlors from the prohibited use list to the conditional use list, which still puts you in the position of filtering proposed locations within the downtown area. So what brings us back today is a proposal which has been discussed between the operators and staff off and on here during the summer months, and that was to expand the tattoo parlor and body piercing studio to the east into a tenant space at 113. And as we understand it and are presenting it to you, the plan would be to near the front part of the tenant space, cut a wall, an opening in the wall between 111 and 113, where the front part of 113 would be used as an expanded waiting area for the tattoo body piercing operation, and that the remainder of this space would be used for a shop that was unrelated to the tattoo and body piercing operation. That's what we need to confirm from the applicant and building owner today is if we are correctly describing their plan. But in any event, the question before you today is whether the tenant space at 111, which is 14 by 50, should be expanded to the east, which essentially allow a 28 by 50-foot tenant space with the understanding being that it's simply an expanded public waiting area. And so we have walked you through the factors that you ought to consider whenever you have a conditional use permit case, and that is looking at whether the conditional use in the proposed location will contribute to the welfare and convenience of the public. This is currently a vacant space, and so putting it into active use in the downtown area would be viewed as a positive, but the question is whether you believe that filling this space with a tattoo parlor expansion would contribute to the welfare and convenience of the public. And so we can hear from the applicant, but this may be a sign that they have determined that the waiting area that they have available in the small space is not big enough to accommodate their customer needs. And looking at impacts and injury to surrounding property, the applicant states that activities will still continue to take place within the building and primarily in the 111 tenant space, so there shouldn't be any physical changes or anything notable to neighbors. Essentially, if this were approved, the frontage of the building on Iron would go from 12% to 24% of the building frontage would be devoted to the tattoo parlor. And then there shouldn't be any impact on public utilities and services, as there's no physical change to the building. And again, on downtown properties, parking is available either in publicly owned parking lots or parallel on-street parking. There is a city-owned parking lot north of the building as well, and tattoo parlors are not generally considered high-traffic generating businesses. So the options that you would have today would be to approve an amended conditional use permit as submitted upon findings that the requirements, necessary findings of fact can be made. You could approve an amended conditional use permit subject to specified conditions and/or revisions to the plan. You could postpone consideration of the application if you feel you need additional information to reach a decision, or you can deny the application if the required findings cannot be made, or if you believe that change in use would cause injury to the surrounding properties of approved in this location. We have basically recommended transferring the conditions of approval of the original over to the expanded. And you may, one option that was not chosen, first time we've just identified as an option, would be to have a review within one year after planning commission approval. But essentially, we're having that today because it's been about one year since this tattoo parlor was approved and has been open. Planning staff was involved in the final inspections back last fall when they made the necessary modifications to the building, and we found that all the conditions that could be addressed prior to their opening had been addressed. The operators are certified, they have their certifications posted conspicuously on the wall inside the building, they have a dividing wall curtain that separates the waiting area and the windows from the areas in which they actually do the work. So our experience is that they have complied with the conditions that the planning commission imposed originally. I think the main thing that we would want to do and perhaps address through a condition or modified condition depending on what we hear is that what is being presented today is that this is for an expanded waiting area, and if you want to limit it or characterize it as that, you may. If it is not a concern, then essentially the full tenant space could be utilized for tattooing and body piercing, provided that these regulations are still adhered to. So that would be your choice, whether you want to specifically limit it to a expanded waiting area only, or if you are simply allowing the expansion of the tattooing and body piercing business into the expanded space. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that you have, and then we do need clarification from the owner and/or operator about how the 113 tenant space would be set up.
Questions of staff? So the 12 conditions here, you say transfer, they're the same as they were the prior?
It's basically taking what was imposed originally and applying those as well to the amended. The amended conditional use permit would still apply to the original space, plus allow the usage of the expanded space. And so we wanted to make sure that we carried those over, and then you can decide, looking at item 11 there, whether that is still a concern for you. The way it was set up was that the conditional use permit was limited to just this space here, and if you think that that is, that the use itself is compatible, then you may not want to carry that over. So if you don't have that condition, then essentially they can expand to anywhere within this particular building on East Iron, or if you choose to use condition 11 on page 7, then that would mean that they'd be limited to this space and the adjoining space, and if they further expanded down the storefront, they'd have to come back to you again. So those are two things that need to be clarified by you as a commission. Is one, are you approving an expanded tattoo parlor and body piercing operation for the 113 tenant space and not getting to the detail of how that space is broken up and used? And then secondly, do you want to look at this every time the tenant space might expand, or are you comfortable with the location generally? So with that, I'd be open to any questions.
I've got one. Oh, Jerry, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm a little confused about that because I thought you hadn't changed from 700 square foot on the original number 10 condition to 1,400 square feet on the proposed condition.
Right, and that would be clarified, what 11 is referring to is the 700 square feet in the 113 space, so if you feel like that should be corrected to read 1,400, that would be perhaps more appropriate. The purpose of that is to say, as it relates to this amended conditional use permit, that they can't go beyond the one, the subject tenant space refers to the 113, but to carry it over and make it more accurate, it would probably, if you want to make a note there, more correctly read 1,400 square feet. But what we are discussing today is whether the operation should be limited to the original 700 square feet, or whether it's appropriate to expand into the next tenant space, which would be 1,400 square feet, and then if that should be limited at all.
Do we know how much of the original 700 square feet is really being used for tattoo and piercing versus waiting at this point?
We don't know in the expanded space. We know in the original space that it's about, if you divided the space into fifths, about 1/5 is a rear hallway corridor, and about 2/5 is the actual area, the studio, so to speak, and then the remaining 2/5 in the front is a waiting area. So I guess we don't, yeah, we don't really have a floor plan per se, do we, John?
And we didn't approve any?
You didn't approve a particular floor plan.
Any kind of space they want.
We did not dictate of that 700 square feet how it was to be used, but there is a, there's a rear corridor at the back of this building that's kind of a service corridor, and then in front of that, behind a demising wall, is the area where the artists actually do their work, and then this front portion here is a waiting area. And as it was described to me, they were wanting to use the front portion of the 113 tenant space as a waiting area, and that the remainder would be used for another purpose, but we want, one, we want clarification from that, and two, if the planning commission doesn't care, or the owners don't want to be limited, then if you don't specify, then essentially, if you approve this, the entire 113 tenant space could be devoted to tattooing and body piercing.
I did have a question. When we discussed this about a year ago, one of our concerns was the area of town that was in and any problems that may ensue from the business. Has there, in your knowledge, has there been any unusual problems as a result of having the tattoo parlor at this location, i.e. a lot of police reports or a lot of calls to the planning department about this?
The latter, a lot of calls to the planning department, and it's mostly a disagreement about you cannot smoke cigarettes inside buildings. Most of the calls we've received have been about employees, customers, others congregating on the sidewalk in front of the business to smoke, and also in the alley to the west, where there's an entrance to a loft apartment that you can see over there on the left-hand side. So the discussions that we had with the operators was that, all things being equal, if they didn't want to call attention to themselves or generate complaints, that having a smoking area at the rear, back where the public parking lot was, was preferable to the sidewalk. But the only thing that we've gotten reports or complaints about was people congregating on the sidewalk in front, and to a lesser degree, the alley to the west for their smoking breaks. But other than that, I know other complaints that are either health or safety related or police department reports. Thank you.
Other questions of staff?
I don't want to make a long, a short meeting long, but I'm new, so I'm going to ask a couple of questions. I see condition eight and nine, it was in the original one, and it's in this one. Is that boilerplate? Do we always have to put in writing that if there's a crime being committed, we should notify the police? It seems to be like we're just making things longer and longer than they need to be. That's pretty obvious.
It is making it longer and longer, and then it's a question of whether you think it's longer than it means to be. What we did was quite a bit of research in looking at other communities and things that had generated complaints in other communities. There was a great deal of concern about loitering and about those types of things. Yes, that is a general responsibility, but what makes this different is that if you have other types of businesses or shops, you are not subject to a conditional use permit, and you're not subject to revocation. So that type of condition is a condition that the planning commission has placed on bars and drinking establishments in the downtown area, where for a period of time in the early 2000s, we were constantly monitoring police reports, underage drinking, disturbance of the peace, those types of things. Those have not proven to be associated with this, so yes, that is, that could be viewed as overkill, but part of that, putting that all to writing is that that was putting the business operator and just putting them on notice of what the expectations were, because we were taking a use that was previously prohibited and allowing it on a conditional use basis. So over time, as these become more prevalent and people get more used to it, you know, I would think that that list should shrink.
Commissioner Trent? Justin, do you have any questions?
There being no other questions, maybe we should hear from the applicant? Completely dead, and I can't figure out why. There should, there's supposed to be a battery in one of the two rooms.
And your name and address, please.
General Camp, 622 South, I mean, excuse me, 652 South Santa Fe. That was one of my rental properties. Anyway, I'm here today to just ask for permission to amend that item 10 for the conditional use permit for them to have access to rent the 113 spot. I don't know what their floor plan, he does have a floor plan that's available that he's put together, so he can go over that with you, Travis, the owner of the tattoo parlor. But anyway, a question I have, Dean, also is on the smoking issue. Originally, we had it to where, you know, that was a big concern, and we didn't want them congregating out front, so we had to move, or the, we wanted them to smoke in the alley or in the back, but they weren't doing it. So there was complaints about that, smoking up front and congregating up front. So that was when you got, when the city planning department had mentioned that to them, and so they moved back to the alleyway to start smoking. And then there was a complaint that the smoke was going into another building that was, you can clarify this if I'm incorrect, but it was interfering with one of the other tenants of the building or the owners of the building. So then it was moved back up to the front to allow them to go back up to the front. And the smoking issue wasn't even being caused by them, it was being caused by their own tenant that was smoking in the hallway of their going up stairwell of the apartment, going up to the apartments. And so I think there was a little, if I'm not correct, tell me, I think there was a little bit of misunderstanding on that and a little bit unjust action or interpretation of just what do they do? Do they smoke in the back? Do they smoke in the front? You know, where do they smoke? And I think that needs to be clarified also, you know, today, what needs to be done if you associate a, let them to expand into that 113, so.
Right, and we've made a point there at the bottom of page 7 that it is not against any code or ordinance for people to smoke on public sidewalks. What my, and I believe, and Mr. Ritchie is not directly involved anymore, I've had three face-to-face meetings with Mr. Ritchie, who was the body piercing artist in this operation, and I said, if you want us to quit contacting you and you want to make this go away, then have your employees and customers and everyone have them do their smoking on break or while they're waiting around back in the rear at the city parking lot as opposed to the alley or the front. And that's what we consistently have advised. And so as Mr. Kennedy asked about complaints or any contacts, I would say that they've been constant and consistent from the owner of the building on the Santa Fe and Iron corner, and their number one complaint is people loitering on the sidewalk, and they also, if they were misinformed and it was their own tenant, then so be it, but nonetheless, the owner of the property to the west complained about smoking in the alley and that smoke entering through the entrance and permeating into their building. We do our best that we can to try to discern what is true and not true, but when somebody complains, we have to respond. So my consistent advice to Mr. Ritchie was, if you want us to stop bugging you about the congregants smoking, then the best place would be in the rear area adjacent to the city parking lot, and if you do that, we're not going to bother you again. But I would expect that if the people waiting to get in or choosing to smoke outside, well, instead of being in the waiting area or employees going outside to smoke and they're congregating on the sidewalk, I would expect that planning staff will get calls.
Is there a regulation on smoking in town that states something about a distance from a public door?
10 feet.
10 foot?
Yes.
So how far is it to the curb there, Jim?
The curb, I mean, how far would you? It's probably 10, 12 foot to the curb, but where they're smoking is up by the door.
And I will give you an example, another example that I was involved with, the Salina Regional Health Center has employees who smoke. It is legal for those employees to go out on the sidewalk on Santa Fe and smoke. However, Salina Regional Health Center has instituted work rules for their employees that say you can't go out on Santa Fe and smoke on the sidewalk at the entrances into the hospital, you've got to smoke in designated smoking break areas. So is it legal for them to smoke on the sidewalk on Santa Fe under public law? Yes, but the Salina Regional Health Center said if you're an employee of ours, you're not going to be allowed to smoke out there. So it is perfectly legal under all city codes for people, either employees or those waiting for service at the tattoo parlor to be on the sidewalk smoking. The question is, are we going to get complaints about it? And the answer is yes.
Is the complaint coming from the chiropractic office or from somebody within your other tenant in your building?
No, I don't think it's coming from other, I mean, tenants. I think it's coming personally, I think it's.
It's coming from the Strombergs who own the property to the west.
Yeah, and there again, you know, I would prefer seeing a building in the, smoking in the alley.
Well, I think if I remember how this went a year ago, you told us, Jim, it was your responsibility as the landlord to take care of congregation and that, and you wouldn't, we're not going to allow that. And you aren't going to allow loitering in front of the building and congregating in front of the building. I look at that as still being your responsibility to make sure that doesn't happen.
Okay, and that's fine. I don't recall that.
It's happened for a year, we've all seen it.
Yeah, and I have too, and, but, you know, I don't have a problem, you know, enforcing that, as long as I know what direction to go on it. I mean.
But just so we understand, the lease would be the entire 113 tenant space, and then you're leaving it to them for the floor plan of how they're going to use that?
That's correct, yes. I don't really have anything else. I don't know what their floor plan is. I know there's overflow and there's people standing outside a lot, you know, just, you know, waiting because there's such a small waiting area, that they do need that extra space for waiting, for a waiting area, and I think it would clean, it would help clean up that standing around out front. And as far as, I would assure you that I will, if that is a decision by the city that a decision, um, by the city that they do it in the alley at the back, that's what I'll make them do. So, that's, uh.
You could at least move the bucket and the chair around to the rear of the building.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, uh, but anyway, I'm finished. Uh, I don't have anything else unless you have any questions. So, um, I'll, uh, leave it up to Travis to explain anything else. Thank you.
Any questions from Mr. Ravenkamp? Any other commissioners? Thank you.
I'm here for Travis. Does he have a word? Travis?
Yeah, he's. There we go. I am Travis Thornhill. I live at eight thirty-four North Barber in McPherson, Kansas, and I am the sole owner of Iron Street Tattoo and Body Piercing. Um, I, I'm glad to hear that our only complaint is the smoking issue and nothing more severe. Uh, we have tried to appease our neighbor. Um, at first it was in the alley and then we had a client actually sit on her back step. It wasn't, you know what I mean? It wasn't one of our employees, but he come in and told us, so we made signs and put them on the windows of our building facing her building, telling people, "Hey, stand over on this side. This is their building, you know, stay away." Um, the complaints kinda still came, we still got the calls, so we did a little investigative work. And, uh, we got a picture of their tenant standing or sitting in the hallway of the apartment building, which is attached to her building, smoking cigarettes. Sitting up in the, you know what I mean, not outside the building, somewhat inside the building, smoking cigarettes.
And honestly, I, you don't even, you didn't have to show it to me, but I've actually seen him sitting in the doorway there.
Yeah.
Before. I mean, I drive by this location all the time.
Well, we just, you know, we wanted to try to solve the problem because again, anytime anything come up, you know, we would like to, you know, we're, we're not out to cause any trouble, we're out to be a success- successful business. And that's why I'm here today is because we are victims of success and we would like to expand here. Um, basically what we're, what we're looking to do is, uh, no longer use our one eleven entrance. The entrance will be at one thirteen, so everybody will go into there. Um, we measured that, I had my, the contractor come and we did the measurements and stuff. The waiting area in one thirteen, the front room, is fifteen by twenty-two, which would greatly allow for more people to be able to sit and not have to stand or, or wander in and out or what have you, um, you know, get some couches in there or something. Um, at the back of that, of that first room is a partition wall with two doors on each side. Um, so both are, you know, they're, you can close it completely, not see back there, which is, you know, which was another thing that we had to abide by on the first building. Um, but it would also allow us, you know, to have a second bathroom. Um, it, and just, just keep people from, from having to, you know, having to stand outside or, or what have you. You know, the, we figured we're starting small and that, that small waiting area would, would accommodate, you know, our flow of traffic, but it's, we, we're successful. I don't know what else to say, you know? So, we need a, we need a little bit more space for, for our customers to come in and be comfortable. Um, and beyond that, we didn't, we, also we hadn't, um, we weren't, we weren't gonna, we were gonna keep the signage the same. Um, there's the tattoo and the piercing internal signs that we were gonna take out of the window and move over to the other window, but as, as far as expanding signage over to that, the next space, um, we, we really didn't think it was gonna be, uh, too necessary. But, uh, so the entrance and exit to the shop itself will be solely the one thirteen and not the one eleven anymore. Uh, we just keep that locked and then have a, you know, "Please use the next entrance" sign or something like that.
So I hear and you say you'll double the waiting area?
Right. If, if not triple. Our, our, our waiting area now in one eleven is about ten by fifteen and that, and you could even cut that into half because we have our front desk where our, where our counterperson has his area and stuff. So, I mean, really, I mean, they've got, I'd say six, six foot by fifteen feet for people to come in and wait. You know, on a busy Saturday or a busy Friday, you know, there's a lot of people standing and then, you know, have people wait outside or whatnot. And I mean, we try to do everything we can to get them in as soon as possible, um, because, you know, again, that, a complaint's the last thing I want. Um, and we also have, the, the girls at the salon that have moved in next door also tend to flow our way. When they go out on their brakes, they, they tend to flow this way on our brakes and I have to come out and tell them, "Hey guys, we gotta, you know, I don't, I don't like having more than three people out front if there are. I, I come out and I tell them, 'Hey, you know, we gotta, gotta break this up, don't want any calls or anything.'" But, um, other than that, yeah, that's, that's what we have proposed. Basically, there'll be a, um, the contractor, Darrell Dunn, applied for a permit to, uh, to, to join the two buildings by putting a hole in the wall. And the hole would be back behind, uh, the waiting room area. So again, there would be no public visibility into what we do. So it would still keep up with, you know, everything that we have to abide by in our current situation, so.
Does the public have access out the north side of the building?
I'm sorry?
Do your clients have access out the north side of the building?
No, no, no.
Back or parking lot?
Yeah, back past the bathrooms, there's a door that goes into a, uh, like, yeah, it's a utility passageway where, you know, the electricians can get in and the plumbing and everything. It's, it's not used for public use. I mean, if need be, if there was a, you know, an emergency and that's the only way to get out, yes, of course, they could get out. I mean, we don't, we don't advertise it or post it as a alternate entrance or exit. And, you know, we just keep it blocked, so.
I have a question if I may.
Sure.
It seems like the concern we're facing here is more of loitering and smoking in front of your building. Do you think you can reasonably accomplish getting that moved to the back if that's the area the city says is the preferred place to have it? Or is that gonna create a problem? Because customers can say, "I'll choose not to." And then how does that put you within?
That's, and that's a good point.
So my question is, can you do it? You've got a year to trial.
I mean, if it's, if it's between, if it's between them getting what, you know, what they came to get and, and not, you know, I mean, if it, if I have to get stern with them, I suppose I can, you know, "Hey, you're not gonna receive service if you continue to, to do this out front."
That's kinda where my question about the back entrance was going. As ergonomics could serve, if you.
Right.
You know, they're lead to go out the back. They might go that way.
And everybody in our, I mean, we have the, we have the, the salon who are, I believe everybody there smokes. And then we have the coffee lady down the way. She doesn't smoke near as much as the salon ladies, but she comes out and, you know, she comes out her front door, does the same thing that we all do. Um, and then you have across the street, there's a salon and a massage parlor. They have a, uh, they have a bench right beside, directly beside their door, they have a bench that they just come outside your door and they sit down. That's where they do their business. So, I mean, we, you know, we honestly jumped through the hoops of, okay, well, we need to be in the alley. Well, the alley caused a problem, so we put up the signs and then we talked to the city. And this was, I think, before they said, "Go behind the building." They said, "Well, you're better off, we're getting more complaints that you're in the alley now than we were when you were in front, so go back to the front." Um, we put the butt can beside the door, not so you could stand beside it and smoke there, but just to keep the place clean. You know, people were flicking their butts out in the street and I had my, my assistant go out there and clean up once a week and, uh, to try to save from that trouble, you know, we put that out there, which even the salon girls use, which is a good thing. Um, and what we, we, we had kinda hoped to get is maybe a bench by that, by the light pole. So it's away from the buildings and it's, it'd be an obvious place to, you know, that's where you're to do your business. Um, but again, you know, to save any headaches or anything else, I mean, if I have to send people a block this way, a block that way, whatever, I mean, we'll jump through whatever hoops, you know, you know. If this is the only issue that we have with the public, then we'll try to solve it any way we can.
And then this question is a kind of follow-up, but I think this might be the time to answer it. And this would be a Dean because it relates directly to what I just asked you. Legally, can we even, if I'm, if customers can, they legally can smoke on that sidewalk, there's no ordinance that says they must go somewhere else. So the law allows them to do that. Can an owner then enforce anything that's really not law? We can't do that even. Can we? That's my question.
They can enforce it vis-à-vis employees, they can ask or encourage customers, but that it can't be required. It's just something that you have to figure into this. But it was not a requirement, again, that most of the early part of the summer and all, most of our contacts we were having with, was, with Mr. Ritchie. And I simply suggested that is to make any contact from us go away, encouraging or requiring people to do their smoke breaks in the back. Um, but again, it is not, it is not something that is required. It is just something that if people ask what, what calls attention to it or creates a certain perception, that is the only thing that city staff has heard, um, from October two thousand eleven to the present, is about that. And the only thing that we have gotten complaints about was from the property owner to the west, both as to smoking on the sidewalk and within the alley. And again, it's, it's not something that's against the law, but it is something that can generate complaints.
I don't disagree, but, uh, but it seems, it's just, I'm just struggling with it honestly because we don't like it, I don't like it, but it seems unthinkable we're singling out one business when maybe there's other businesses doing the same thing throughout town, and I don't know that there's fairness in that.
Correct. And the only difference is that this business is subject to a conditional use scrutiny, whereas the other businesses are not. That, that is the only difference.
That's the only difference.
When I see, I think this particular building has the yellow tape designating the ten feet away from the door so that people don't smoke too close. But if we start doing that, we'll have yellow tape all over the sidewalk on Santa Fe and Iron Street telling where people can't smoke, and I think.
Yes. Probably worked better if it was imaginary.
Travis, it's too bad that you get your stigma of the tattoo parlor and all carries what it does and that, that's what, what causes this all to happen.
Right.
But the question, Dean said something about a non-related shop in the back of it, what is that all about?
That, again, that's why I'm asking, like, all, all of our dealings, I'll just keep saying this and saying this and saying this. Mr. Ritchie is not involved with this business anymore. He was the original body piercing artist. We had numerous meetings with Mr. Ritchie this summer, and what Mr. Ritchie discussed with us was cutting a hole in the wall, using the front area for a waiting area and that there was gonna be some other type of gift shop or jewelry shop or other in the remaining portion of the building. That's what was described to us. So that is what we put in our report, and then we asked for Mr. Tanning Hill to clarify for us today whether we are correctly depicting that. So.
Travis, what happened?
We have said on page two of our report that the remainder of the tenant space would be used for a shop unrelated to the tattoo and body piercing operation. This will need to be confirmed by the applicant. So Mr. Thornhill needs to tell you today whether the application is to take the entire one thirteen tenant space and make it tattoo parlor, body piercing studio. There's nothing wrong with that, there's no, no reason to limit it. We were simply describing, Mr. Ritchie started this application and that's what he described to us.
So Travis, is that your expectations?
Yes, our, our main goal was to expand waiting for our customers. I, I, I have yet to decide what, what to do with that back room behind the building, you know, the second room in one thirteen. Um, you know, if, if we're going through all this trouble, I mean, just to save, just to save face, I mean, if we can use it for, for operations, fantastic. If we can't, we can, we can live with that too. Um, I didn't know, you know, if it's.
Yeah, no one's suggesting that it be limited. It, it's just that we wanna be upfront with everyone that, that, if the expectation is that the tattoo parlor body piercing operation will go from seven hundred to fourteen hundred square feet, that's fine, as long as that's a fact that everybody knows and understands and realizes that that's what you're voting on.
Can you construct the, uh, the, that side, that building, to direct people to their back, to the back door so they can go out to the north side and smoke?
Oh, to smoking?
Yeah. Since you're not gonna be using it, you know, at this point, you're not using it, and maybe you could construct it.
Yeah, I mean.
To direct them back.
I mean, right now, it's a closet. It's, you know what I mean? There's all kinds of stuff in there. We could, we could clear it out and stuff. Um, I just don't know if it'd be a, a safety thing or, you know, I mean, it's a dungeon when you walk back there. You know, it's not well-lit, uh.
It would be a good idea, I think, to, to construct something to direct people up away from the front door. I mean, the loitering's my problem. It's, it's not the smoking issue, in my opinion, it's the loitering.
Right.
I mean, when you're walking down the sidewalk and you wa- have to walk through ten people to get down the sidewalk, some people are, are.
Oh, for sure.
Are not happy with that.
And some of that is, and some of that is because we have such a small waiting area.
Right. And it looks like you're gonna take care of part of that.
Right.
But the smoking issue may be solved if you can just direct them.
Right.
Without having to go outside the building and around back.
Absolutely.
Because they're probably parking in the north parking lot anyway.
Yes. Yes, most people do because there's three hour parking in the front. Sometimes the tattoo takes longer than that and they end up getting a ticket, you know? We have to warn them, "Hey, you might wanna park around back because, you know, up front is, is limited time, so."
Well, John, you know, I, I agree with this, this particular business brings along with it a stigma. But I can remember growing up and both sides of Santa Fe, from as far north as I could see, as far south as I could see, had loitering. It was called business. I remember when both the theaters were running full-time, you stood in line sometimes for thirty, forty minutes to get into a show. I think we need to start thinking really what we wanna do with that area. Having a few extra customers there to me is not, now, if they're hanging out for thirty or forty minutes.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, pedestrian traffic downtown is not a bad day.
Thank you, Jerry. We've actually had customers like come in on a Saturday and, you know, again, we try to, we try to keep them in, but they come out and they see how dead it is. They're like, "Is this, this is Saturday. Where's everybody at?" We say, "Yeah, it's, it's kinda dead on a Saturday," you know? I mean, I, I'm, I'm with Jerry on that one, but that's, that's a totally different, that's another day, but, uh.
You know, I, I wanna say I do feel some way, I really struggle with this, and as you recall last time we talked about, I struggled with it a little bit. But the truth is, I was guilty of loitering last Thursday night, I think it was, in front of Martin Malley's waiting room in the Steeple Open. And me and several hundred others were loitering there for about thirty minutes, and I don't think anybody thought much about it. Uh, so it's not fair to expect anything of one business and another of another in the same area other than a conditional use. So, um, the smoking, if it becomes a public nuisance to the tenants of an apartment next door, that would be a concern to me, but.
Well, obviously I identified him as a smoker too, so.
Yeah. Right. So, so I think, that's where I am.
Other questions or remarks for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
If this is approved today, does it need to be, uh, does it need to go through the city commission again?
No, but if the planning commission votes favorably on this today, it is a approved condition, amended conditional use permit.
If the applicant is through addressing the commission, I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anybody from the public that'd like to comment on this issue? There being none, I'll close the public session and bring it back to the commission. Gentlemen, are there any more questions or remarks or motion on this item?
One thing we would point out was, would be two things. One, attached to the back of this was your findings of fact in support of your action a year ago. And given the location and the scale of what we're talking about, I think most of those would still, um, hold in place for this application. And then you would want, if, if you believe it would be helpful, to look at condition eleven on page seven, if you think that would make it more clear. Um, there's two choices there. One is to eliminate it altogether, which will allow them to expand again without coming back to you, or to make it more clear, um, would be substituting fourteen hundred square feet for the seven hundred square feet, cause that would more accurately describe the extent of the tenant space if, if this is approved.
Well, I'm in, for one, I'm in favor of letting them use their space the way they want to. I guess we've made our objections about smoking, maybe none of us up here smokers, pretty plain, but, uh, we're. Maybe none of us up here smokers, pretty plain, but we rely on the applicants and the operator to police that, to make their neighbors happy. Other comments, gentlemen? Do we, the findings of fact suitable from the prior time?
Yes, as far as I'm concerned.
Do we want to see this again in a year?
I don't think so.
I don't, I just ask.
I'm inclined to, I, I think by keeping the condition of 1,400, if it expands, we're going to see it again. By, by leaving condition 11 in, we'd see it again. If it goes beyond, it's the two spaces we're talking about now, 11 and 13. So I'm inclined to make a motion that we approve this application, CU 11 dash 7A with the authorization of 11 indicating 1,400 square foot and more of the 700 square foot as stated.
A second.
Any other discussion?
We need to also confirm the, the original findings of fact. Confirmed that the original findings of fact are still applicable.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That item carries. Next item on our agenda, number three, is a continuing review of the discussion of conditional use permit regulations on 42597-2.
I want to start by just, and these will end up in your meeting notebooks, and then we'll also, as a continuing reminder, we will have these attached to the staff reports as they come out. And wanted to, on attachment two there, discuss the four items that might come before you that would be considered quasi judicial land use matters where findings are, are very important. And attachment two there identifies a rezoning, any rezoning of property that would be a map amendment, a conditional use permit, a special use permit, which mostly applies to open air markets or free markets like Stutzman's at, at Ninth and Cloud was a special use permit. And then special permits, decisions about the location of wireless communication facilities. And so those are four items that are quasi judicial in nature. And so the process that we're going to try to more formalize and institutionalize and not be so hit and miss on is that we will, as a staff, provide a summary of, or offer up findings at the end of the written staff report, which you may accept and agree with, or you're certainly free to disagree with. You can certainly consider things outside the staff report, such as information supplied by the applicant or concerned property owners. But what we would offer at that time is if at the close of the public hearing, the chairman will ask commissioners whether there's any disagreement with the findings and recommendation put forward by staff. And if that is the case, then we'll have the, the city attorney, Mr. Bankston, available at that time. And you would be having the option of going into a closed session and deliberate on a quasi judicial matter and develop alternative findings and conclusions with his assistance.
Does that mean that every time we have a quasi judicial item on the agenda, we're going to have to have the city attorney here?
He will be available for that essentially on call. That is, that is correct. So what we will do our best is that we will, I mean, it is a plain fact that there's going to be cases where staff might have findings or present things in a staff report and either the applicant or the concerned neighboring property owners may want to see a different result. Well, if they want to see a different result and, and the majority of commissioners want to see a result that's different than what all the information provided in the staff report, then it's important that you have access to the city attorney to develop alternative findings and conclusions that, that weren't available at the meeting. So you, you will essentially have the opportunity to go into a closed session and articulate those with the, the city attorney and, and come out and, and do that. So yes, the answer is that on those four types of cases, that the city attorney would be available. And at that point, we, we have a staff report, we have a recommended action, we have findings that we think support that action. And the applicant and majority of the commissioners or neighboring owners and majority of commissioners don't see it that way. You can't really hang your hat on what is in the staff report or the findings there because those lead to one conclusion. And if you have a different one, then the city attorney needs to be made available to you to help you articulate those. So that, that is, that is something that, that we will attach there. And then attachment three is simply what we went through today in, with the conditional use permit application. And again, that's, that's just a summary from the ordinance of the findings that you are to make. And what we've tried to do with those, with each of these attachments, which will be in your packet, which are also in your meeting notebook, that basically give you a, a format that can be used. And then that's on the second page there. Says that you move that application whatever be approved or denied based on the following findings. And then reciting the factors that support the motion as they relate to the, the conditional use permit application. So if you find that the conditional use permit application as outlined and presented to you would have caused substantial injury to neighboring property owners or reduction in property values, then that is something that should be offered up in support of any motion. Or if you find that, based on information presented, that the drainage plan is inadequate or access to the site is inadequate or whatever, but, but trying to move to the point where not only are you approving or denying, but also providing whatever from that list of factors what might support your action. And so following that is, is a, a resolution that was done summarizing the city commission action, which essentially endorsed your action on the hospice application. And that resolution has the conditions of approval that applied to the hospice facility, but it also, on the second page of that resolution, says that approval is based on the final findings of fact and law. And so that, that was done by the outside legal counsel with assistance from the, the planning staff. And so I, I think what we're saying is that we're going to try not to get that formal with the resolution every time, but, but to try to use that format. And we've, we've been very good about, in our staff reports, having potential conditions or restrictions for you to discuss. We've been less good about helping articulate findings and conclusions for you. And we will try to improve in that area, but there's always going to be the case where your findings and your conclusions may differ from what staff has put out. And so it's important at that point that you have the ability to get with the city attorney and help come up with findings or conclusions that are alternative to what staff has presented in your report. And to do that in a timely manner would require the city attorney to be available to come down here and meet with you in closed session at that hearing. So that, that's what we've agreed to do. And I don't know, Greg, if you have any additional things you want to add to that in terms of how that would work and if I've summarized that well, but the, the goal is to make the city attorney available as a resource for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, real quickly, I hadn't necessarily anticipated speaking, and I think Dean has summarized the purpose well. The only thing I wanted to reinforce, I have any number of things that I can be working on upstairs, and that is the thought, that I would just be sure to be in the building anytime you are all meeting, so that on a moment's notice, I can come down and be with whatever assistance I might be able to be to you. Or if I'm not available, one of the other lawyers in our firm. Be, and certainly happy to do that, and just to be called upon whenever that is found to be useful. Didn't really anticipate even having heard the matter, thinking that certainly staff would be very capable in assisting you in that context. But in that they are statutorily responsible for providing you with their recommendation, they take on the nature of an advocate oftentimes and are possibly perceived as, possibly not being as objective as we might be able to coming into the situation, not even having heard the case, but just assisting you in articulating what your findings are. I think there's another aspect of this, and that is that we want to reinforce the understanding that when it comes to these matters, your proceeding, for lack of a better term, is where the action is. This is where the public hearing occurs. This is where the factual elements of a case are to be identified, determined, and documented. So that as these, as your recommendations go on to the city commission, it's not a matter of everyone thinking, well, we'll just, we'll just have another round at the city commission level. And then, as you know, and as we, you know, as has occurred from time to time, you get in the situation where the city commission has a set of facts, you all have a set of facts in terms of what has been presented to you. And part of the objective is to reinforce the concept that this is where the public hearing occurs, this is where the factual determinations are made, this is where the record is made. And hopefully, I think as we experienced in the BFR case, if those are developed as fully as they can be, no matter where the case might go, city commission level or even if it's challenged at the district court level, there is not a need to be concerned about anyone having to testify. There's not even a need to necessarily roll the tape. It's a matter of having the results of your hearing and your deliberation. So happy to be of whatever assistance we might be in that effort.
Thank you, Greg. Anything further? Gentlemen, questions?
It sounds to me like staff's recommended these changes, attorney, city's legal counsel is supportive of it. What, what steps do we take? What do we do?
It's not really any action required on your part. What we're trying to do is just to prepare you that you'll, you'll see, you know, like, like we're, we're beating a horse. But we'll just continue to see these attachments attached to the report and we'll, we'll just keep reinforcing. But what, what you'll see is that we'll, we'll try to do a better job at the end of our reports of, of summarizing the factors or findings that we relied on. And then you have to decide as a commission that you're accepting staff's findings or I will, I will just give you an example. It did not involve the planning commission, involved the city commission. There was a case of a request where you had reviewed a plat that was out on West Magnolia Road. As part of that plat, no access was allowed to West Magnolia Road. The access was from Virginia Drive. There was a petition filed with the city commission to break the restricted access on West Magnolia Road. City staff wrote their report and made a recommendation that the petition be denied. A majority of the city commissioners was in favor of granting the break in access. They couldn't rely on the staff report or staff's findings because we recommended denial. So then they had to meet in closed session with the city attorney to develop their findings in support of the break in access. So that, that is just one example where you have a report, you have the findings and conclusion that staff's relying on, staff recommended denial. The city commission wanted to approve it and did so. And then they got with the city attorney to help draft findings and conclusions in support of their action. So this, this is brought to you to, what we've done is, some of you recall the experience with BFR metals. The city commission had a similar experience with the hospice of going into closed session to, to develop those findings. This is really basically, instead of making it hit and miss, we're, we're trying to institutionalize this and make sure that we have access to the city attorney and his advice and counsel as, on, as needed basis at, at the meeting. And so we'll, we'll, we'll have these attachments that we've outlined here, will be attached to the reports anytime a quasi judicial action comes up. So you'll have your report and we'll have these attachments attached to that, so that's identified for you and so you know that that's available.
Procedurally, just in making a motion, then, I'm assuming that these seven that are outlined here, they will be in the same order each time?
Yes.
As a, as a. If we're making a motion, I could make a motion to approve and then say, findings one, findings three, findings seven, as opposed to articulating each and every word to those findings?
Right. And so what you see attached to the tattoo parlor report was, was findings that we simply scripted out, you could read and you could say, we, based on, or we accept the findings of fact outlined in the staff report. Where that doesn't work is where we have, we have outlined a whole series of findings that lead to one decision or recommendation, and a majority of the commissioners see it the other way. Then you can't say, based on the findings in the staff report, because they don't support that. And there's, there's nothing wrong with that, but when you get in that situation, then that is where the availability of the city attorney comes in, where he can assist with that.
We just can't say, and others.
So that, that is just a briefing for you to, to put in. In my experience in, in reading it, the, the conditional use case, because it's so use specific and location specific, that tends to be the type of case where the findings are most important. And rezonings tend not to be as complicated. But if you look at lawsuits that end up in the Kansas Supreme Court, the vast majority of them are ones that involve conditional uses, because conditional uses are usually involving uses that aren't universally popular, such as salvage yards or landfills or things like that. So the findings and conclusions become a lot more important in that case. So there, there is no action required on that item that was just in there as an informational item to try to inform you of, you're going to see a slightly different look, but we're going to do everything we can so that it's a conclusion of the report. If you just want to adopt or accept the findings of fact that staff has laid out, you can incorporate that into your motion without having to articulate each one, especially if it's, if we got it in, in writing there, then you can simply refer to it.
It'll be interesting to see how that plays out because between how biased the presentations are on conditional use permits, when the applicant doesn't come ready to speak to the defense of all of the opposition, and the opposition gets up and throws the sink at you, and we don't agree with staff's comments. you, and we don't agree with staff's comments, and there are some commissioners that feel that most of that hashing out ought to be done in the public rather than a private session, I'll be interested to see how that shakes out.
Yeah, and the way that we've outlined there is, is then it becomes incumbent on the chairman to basically say, is there disagreement among commissioners with the findings and recommendations put forward by staff? And you're kind of going to have to pull the commissioners and say, "Well, I disagree, and I disagree, and I disagree." Then, if you've got five people up there that disagree with what staff has put forward, then that's when the call goes into the city attorney and says, "Well, we need some help sorting this out."
And how about if commission likes two, six, and eight, and three of the others like one, five, and seven, and, you know?
It's all, it's all going to be, it's all going to be in the making of the motion, and what motion gets majority support, but I'll let Mr. Benson weigh in on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick comment, if I may, along that line, and for the rest of the commissioners. This is Salina, Kansas. We're used to doing as much as we possibly can in open session, and fully appreciate that. How that is done is up to you all and your comfort level. As you know, on the one end of the spectrum, there, in that process of making findings of fact, you are in a quasi judicial role. You are much like a jury in a court case, and there, there's a reason that juries deliberate in private, as they work through those factual determinations. That's not to say that if it's a situation where you all are comfortable and prefer that that process occur here in the open session, then we'll do our best to make that work. There could be times at which, in order for me to advise you that it would be necessary, or at least, let's put it this way, if I'm in that process, you don't want me deciding whether you want certain advice given privately or publicly. I think you want the opportunity to decide that yourself. So, if I have to give you specific legal advice, say there's a finding of fact that you think is relevant, that I'm concerned that is a matter of law, it is not an allowable consideration on a particular case, rather than just making that pronouncement publicly, I will probably want to advise you of that privately. So, we may be out here, we may be back and forth, we may be in there. We'll try to make it work as well as we can in the circumstances, always trying to lean toward the openness that you're accustomed to.
Greg, just, when we go into executive session, does that require a motion by this commission? Or does the chairman call that executive session?
The, that seems like a yes or no answer, question, doesn't it? It's not, unfortunately, I can't give you a yes or no answer, because there's a couple things going on there. Your, your point's a good one. The closed session could occur in one of two contexts. The open meetings law recognizes that when you or any other body is in a quasi judicial role, you're actually, there is a specific reference to that, to that role, and it is referred to, I believe, more just as a closed session.
It doesn't use the term executive session in the statute.
It's in a separate section. It recognizes that when you're in that quasi judicial role, you are entitled to deliberate privately. So, you're, it's almost its exemption or its entitlement in and of itself. It is not a part of the executive session statute. Now, if, if we were simply here, and there was a point of law that I needed to advise you of, then it's possible that we could be in an executive session for an attorney-client privileged communication. So, depending on what we're doing, it could be either. That's why I couldn't answer you yes or no.
No more.
In either case, in either case, it would be my understanding that it would be the choice of the majority of the body as to whether you were in either the closed session or an executive session, depending on the circumstance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Any other questions or remarks, gentlemen?
We don't have any. It'll just be a, a learning curve for all of us. The, the example, and again, every, every community does it different. The important thing is that that option has always been available. We haven't always utilized that or utilized it well. There's a limited number of communities in Kansas, and what they do is that they have a preliminary vote on a matter, and then staff and legal counsel go write up findings after the vote, and then it comes back at a later meeting, and the commission actually votes at one meeting and adopts findings at a separate meeting. That's not really very efficient, and so our goal is to try to, to make it so that it, it can be done as much as possible at one meeting and not a two-step process. And so, speaking of two-step processes, we have one more item there on item four that we'd like to, I think we're ready for, at the chairman's pleasure.
No, go right ahead. Review the final development. Oh, you had, don't you have the draft replacement language?
Well, that, that's just there for informational purposes. It's not there for any action at this time. We're not ready for that, so we're just, on the subject of conditional use permits, that's just an update on some of the previous discussions the commission's had, but not, that is not an action item.
Under revocation, I think you've got some, with the very last line, you've repeated a, a phrase in the, in the, that last paragraph, last line, the last paragraph.
That appears to be repeated twice?
Yeah, after revocation, then you've repeated, is made following the public hearing on such a revocation.
Okay. Well, that, that is not ready for any, any type of action. It was more just to give you examples or illustrations of, there's been talk about expiration and revocation, and whether it runs with the land and those type of things, so that, that was just in there to give you examples of sample language.
Okay. Item number four?
Item number four is a, part of a two-step item, and we'll flash you back to the fall of 2009, and that would be about three years ago at this time. There was a planned development district application relating to expansion at the Salina Community Theater for the construction of a, a black box theater addition to the east, and that involved kind of a jigsaw puzzle of ownership, as well as building a building across what used to be Third Street, a public street. And so, because of the variety of issues, and we were dealing with variations on building setback, lot coverage, shared parking, front yard landscaping, a number of things, that was done as a planned development district. And one of the things that was up in the air at the time is, is this is the plan that you had and reviewed, but up in this area was, it was kind of left undecided at that time. And so, in your action, approving that or recommending approval in 2009, you requested that a final development plan be submitted to and approved by you prior to issuance of any building permits or any other development occurring on Lot Four. And Lot Four is this parcel right over here on Second Street that's kind of bisected by that existing driveway. And what, what you did as a planning commission was basically, you recommended a reduction in the amount of off-street parking. What would normally be required is 156 spaces. What's available is 87 off-street spaces. And when it got to the, the city commission in December of 2009, they disagreed with leaving this to the discretion of, of the community theater, and so they, they found that construction of that parking was necessary as part of their consideration of the planned development district, and they approved a resolution pledging up to $75,000 in city funds to the Community Theater Association for the purpose of helping to finance construction of that lot. And so essentially, they said, "We don't think 87 spaces is enough. We think 119 is needed." And they provided their support for getting that done as well. So, the request is that we now have a final development plan, and John, I don't know if you want to cycle through those, because I'm not, I'm not familiar with. We had, I think, three, four, and five. This was one alternative that was looked at, and it, it had this driveway here and a possible future residence here, and then parking here. And John, you've got alternative four is another alternative. And that had a residence here on the south side, and rather limited parking in there, and then five was another alternative. And five was essentially all parking and no residence, and that, that is where we have ended up. So, the request is approval of final site development plan for Lot Four, and item seven, John, I think is what we want to look at. This is the plan. The final plan for that involves, if constructed, 32 off-street parking spaces. We have met on-site as a staff with Mr. Spicer and Mr. Hall, and it's all staked out, and the dimensions all fit. There will be a 25-foot entrance drive. The access aisles will all be 24 feet in width. The only thing lacking is over here on Second Street, it, it covers more than 60% of the total front yard setback area, but on Second Street, we have 80 feet of right-of-way instead of the standard 60. So, our recommendation is that the, the landscape buffer be moved to the outside, to the right-of-way here, where there's substantial area available. So, we brought this back to you to confirm, first of all, to inform you that the city commission made the parking mandatory, rather than leaving it, the decision of how that property got used, to the community theater. We have reviewed the plan, and it conforms with all the design standards for parking lots, except for the buffer on private property on Second Street. And in reviewing this with the applicant, our recommendation is to approve this final plan to allow this to be constructed as proposed with the five conditions that we've outlined on page four and five. And again, we've, we've met on-site, and I think we have a meeting of the minds with the community theater and the people constructing the lot. There's an existing vegetative hedge between the parking lot at the residence at 119 North Second, and we all agreed, leaving that in place is preferable to any, anything else, so no solid wood fence would be required along this line here, because there's a vegetative hedge. We would have an extension of the sidewalk out here from this driveway down, tying into the rest of the sidewalk to iron. Any ornamental grasses or shrubs would be out in the right-of-way here. We've asked for parking blocks or some barrier to be installed here, so that cars pointing here don't cross this line and get into the path of travel there. We're going to maintain the, the four-foot buffer here. The hedge kind of straddles the property line, and some of the trees and hedge go on to community theater property, and that hedge will be used as the buffer in lieu of trying to install a, a solid wood fence. So, we just wanted to confirm that, at the time that the planning commission reviewed this, there was discussion about cottages and residences and different configurations of parking, but the end result would be 32 spaces. We'll end up with 119 total off-street spaces, and this is consistent with what the city commission approved, and we believe that the design they've come back with conforms with all our parking lot design standards. So, this is brought back to you today to conform with the requirement that a final development plan for Lot Four be reviewed by you before any development occurred there. So, with that, I'd be open to any questions. We do have Mr. Spicer and Mr. Hall here as well, if you have questions of them.
The drive in, oh, picture seven, that's the drive we see through the, in the diagram, right?
This, this is already in. This is already built, and it's, there'll be spaces on this side of it, and then spaces constructed in here.
I just, I have one comment, is that I don't see any reason to waste concrete on a public sidewalk there. It doesn't actually go anyplace. Anybody parked in their parking lot's going to drift across the lots directly to the theater, and not going to go around the block and use that sidewalk, unless we had, you know, there's no further residence to the north of it, so it seems kind of pointless to waste a few more cubic feet of concrete.
There, there is a sidewalk from this point here that continues down to iron, and it, that was staff's idea, at least, to start that here and at least have that option to tie.
Yeah, who's going to use it?
There's not, the sidewalk on the other side of the street, is there?
It's, it's not a complete sidewalk system on the other side. That is...
There are a lot of people who use motorized, handicapped vehicles in that neighborhood. I don't know if any of them are up the street there north on Second, but they could use the new sidewalk to go south.
Right. That is, those conditions are at your discretion, but that, that was our recommendation and discussion, was to at least take that from the, the parking lot driveway to the south property line to tie that in with the, the sidewalk in front of 119 and down to iron.
Other questions of staff? Would the applicant like to address the commission? Thank you for your patience. Appreciate you seeing me late here.
James Hall, current president of Salina Community Theater. Thank you all for taking the time to consider this. We've got what we believe is a good plan put together, working with Dean and the rest of the group, and we hope you all can bless it. We're ready to put it in. Thank you. Hope to see all of you at the theater.
Any questions, comments from Mr. Hall? There being no more, we'll open the public session on this item. Is there any comments from the public? And there being none, we'll bring it back to the commission. Are there further discussion, gentlemen, or motion on this item?
I'll be inclined to make a motion.
I'll be glad to receive it.
Approve application PBD-09, X2B, subject to be filed, revision is outlined by the commission.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Everybody's just exhausted, I guess. All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item carries.
Talk the end of the sidewalk, I guess.
Under other, under other matters, I'd like to announce that community planning, there's a community planning month proclamation, and the month of October is designated community planning month. And during that month, well, we've had the landscaping awards at the prior meeting of this month. We also have Salina serving together on the Make a Difference Day on October 20th, and North Salina's Design Workshop will be celebrated on October 25th and 26th in the Chamber Annex.
So, you've got flyers on that that I would incur. I believe it's Thursday evening, and then all day Friday is a design workshop at the Chamber Annex, and that is to discuss the North Salina, its development pattern and its appearance, and so the public is invited to that, and so we wanted to make you aware of that, that anyone that wants to participate or provide input is, is made aware of that and has an opportunity to provide comments or input. But that, that's pretty much the extent. We've done the landscaping awards here for about the last 10 years, and recognized a lot of good projects as part of community planning month, and this Saturday is Make a Difference Day, and then following that will be focus on North Salina.
Thank you. Maxwell Brooks. Maxwell Brooks has resigned from the commission, I assume that he's kept it so, is, do we know when we'll have a replacement for him?
No, we have passed that on to the city clerk, so she can get with the mayor and see if, get somebody appointed to fill his term. But he has relocated to Colorado and is not able to fulfill the rest of his term.
I'm sorry to hear that. I hope the secretary will record our thanks to Mr. Brooks, he was, he was active and a very articulate member of the commission, so we appreciate the time we had him.
We have no further business this evening, we will meet the first Tuesday in November on the 6th, and we've also got some items filed for the November 20th meeting as well, so we'll meet twice in November.
Okay.
November 6th meeting, there's been some discussion of a 3:00 PM study session, is that-
That is correct. We're going to have a 3:00 PM study session on the 6th, where we'll be discussing the elements of making a Salina a more bicycle-friendly community. There's actually some criteria for being designated a bicycle-friendly community, and we're, we're just going to go through that with the planning commission and, and see where we stack up. It's my understanding that City of Manhattan and the City of Lawrence have been designated as bicycle-friendly communities, and we'll get some information from them and, and see if we're comparable, just so everybody understands what the term bicycle-friendly means.
Thank you, everyone, for their time. We're adjourned.